May the 3rd. And with that, I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to roll call. Would you sign in, please? Ms. Holly?
All councilors present, an accorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up is the Agenda Approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
Thank you. Consular Grego?
If not, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second? I've got a motion and second on the approval of the agenda. Is there any further comment? Discussion? Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
We now have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. We have one card this evening, Mr. Alan Taylor. Mr. Taylor, please approach the podium. Give us your name and your address, optional. You have a three-minute time limit. Thank you, sir, for being here.
All right. My name is Alan Taylor. I am a citizen of Alamosa County, but we are here tonight with a group of Boy Scouts from Troop 291, and we're finishing up the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Very good. Very good.
That's all we have.
How many members do you have in your troop today?
There are fifteen here tonight, I think.
Wow.
Fifteen boys.
Well, thank you.
We have about twenty, but there's fifteen tonight.
Well, thank you for your presence. Certainly appreciate it. Consular Vehill? No? Okay. We're good. Well, thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. It's great that they come to see, because these are future city council people, maybe one of these days. So, thank you, guys, for bringing the kids in and stuff. Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. We hope it's a learning experience for you. Thank you for being here. Oh.
I just was gonna, I don't know if anybody's there. I was gonna ask for this whole process. Is just coming to the meeting what you need to do, or is there more to it? Coming to the meeting?
Just to say that we need to...
All right. Cool. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to ceremonial items tonight. We've got three ceremonial issues. The first one is the Kids to Park Day proclamation. Is there anyone here? Ms. Heinz? Mr. Heinz, are you here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the children?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any comments or questions before I read this proclamation, council?
Just a few here. I know, kind of give you a little bit of history. I know the mayor got an email from the National Park Trust, an organization that tried to get kids out on a special day every year to enjoy the parks, whether it be city, county, state, national. So, what happened? We got that request, and we went ahead and took it to the rec board, and the rec board went ahead and said, yes, that's probably a good thing to go ahead and recognize the National Day, which is going to be May 20th. We kind of modified the proclamation to include things that, you know, not just one day. We're kind of emphasizing that, you know, that parents who take their kids out to our parks every day of the year, that's possible, and also enjoy all the activities that the rec center and the parks offer throughout the year.
Thank you, Heinz. So, with that, I will, unless we have any comments, I will read the proclamation, and I will ask Consular Vehill to present this to you. Whereas, May 20th, 2017, is the seventh Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust; and whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks; and whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol; and whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants; and whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our national parks, and Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors; and now, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2017, as Kids to Park Day in the City of Alamosa, Colorado. Further, I encourage all citizens to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park, not just once, but throughout the year, and to participate in the monthly recreational opportunities offered by the City of Alamosa through the Alamosa Family Recreational Center and Parks Department dated this third day of May, 2017.
Good evening, council.
I will sign this, and we will come down and present this to you. We have our Public Works Director here. Pat, thank you for being here. You've got an entourage as well.
Yes, we do. They came to enjoy the show.
Would you introduce them to us, please? Not that we don't need, know them, but tell us who's here, Pat.
Well, we will in just a moment.
Okay.
I just want to introduce the Drinking Water Week. Each year, the American Water Works Association and a group of other organizations, including the Environmental Protection Agency sponsor Drinking Water Week, to highlight and kind of celebrate the importance of water and the need to reinvest in our water infrastructure. Tap water plays a critical role in the success of a society, from meeting the basic public health needs of providing safe drinking water and adequate sanitation, to sometimes promoting dental health through fluoridation and supporting industrial, agricultural, medical, and recreational activities. During the past century, many improvements in the health, prosperity, and longevity of the U.S. population can be attributed directly to drinking water and water quality. A hundred years ago, life expectancy in the United States was forty-seven years old. Life expectancy now is seventy-eight years. And a lot of that can be attributed to changes in water quality, water treatment, water management. That short life expectancy was partially due to sicknesses carried in drinking water, like typhoid fever. And though those diseases are still common in lesser-developed countries, over the past century, that treatment, disinfection, and the environmental regulation has improved it to the point that the United States has what is considered one of the safest and most reliable drinking water sources in the world. So, tonight, several of the city employees that deal with our wells and our water collection and distribution systems every single day have come to hear the proclamation, and I'd just give them a second to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay. I'm Farren Hall, the YouTube Director. We have Paul Henry, which is one of our staff members, Troy Fritz, Roy Sanchez, Randy Martinez, and Daniel Martinez, or, excuse me, Daniel Toya. But, like I said, they all help to control and maintain the quality of water that's within our city, and I think they do a really excellent job. And for us just to promote this is just another way to shine a little light on our staff, but also to help with the community to understand also some of the efforts that go out and what they can do themselves also.
Thank you, Farren. Consular Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, guys, so much for the work that you do to keep our water clean. I know it's not an easy job, and I know some of the equipment that you're working with is not quite where it needs to be, and we're working on that, but thank you all for the work you do to put in and keep everything that we have going on to keep it safe for our community. So, thank you for that. We appreciate it a lot every single day.
Consular Hensley?
Well, I also want to thank you all. I've done the tour of the water treatment plant, and wow, it's a lot of work. And I don't know what I thought it took to have such great water, but now that I've seen it, I do appreciate everything you do, and thank you.
Very good. Consular Stefano?
I also want to thank you for all the hard work you guys do. This is a life source for life, water, and you guys do a wonderful job, and keep it up. Great job.
Consular Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank you all. I've had the fortunate opportunity to go, just like Consular Hensley, to go and tour the facilities, and you all do a great job. And you're very educated, because it takes a lot of knowledge and skills to operate the water plant. I want people to know that. It requires a lot of continuing education on your parts as well, and that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I can't say enough. I've known many of you gentlemen for many, many years. Many of you have been with the Water Department over twenty years, I'm sure. Farren, how long have you been with the Water Department?
Almost thirty.
Almost thirty. Wow. Well, thank you. Anyway, I will read this proclamation, and I will ask Consular Giego to present it to you. Drinking Water Week, May 7th through the 13th, 2017. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource; and whereas, only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water; and whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend; and whereas, each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Drinking Water Week; and further, I encourage all citizens of the City of Alamosa to support and celebrate all corresponding activities given under this day, third day of May, 2017. Counsel?
If you'll join us, please.
I'm missing him.
Thank you so much. Thank you, blessed change. I know we should give all the water to the blessed.
Did you?
Come on.
Come on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, blessed change.
I know we should give all the water to the blessed.
Did you?
Come on.
Come on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, blessed change.
I know we should give all the water to the blessed.
Did you?
Come on.
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 Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, guys, so much for the work that you do to keep our water clean. I know it's not an easy job, and I know some of the equipment that you're working with is not quite where it needs to be, and we're working on that, but thank you all for the work you do to put in and keep everything that we have going on to keep it safe for our community. So, thank you for that. We appreciate it a lot every single day.
Consular Hensley?
Well, I also want to thank you all. I've done the tour of the water treatment plant, and wow, it's a lot of work. And I don't know what I thought it took to have such great water, but now that I've seen it, I do appreciate everything you do, and thank you.
Very good. Consular Stefano?
I also want to thank you for all the hard work you guys do. This is a life source for life, water, and you guys do a wonderful job, and keep it up. Great job.
Consular Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank you all. I've had the fortunate opportunity to go, just like Consular Hensley, to go and tour the facilities, and you all do a great job. And you're very educated, because it takes a lot of knowledge and skills to operate the water plant. I want people to know that. It requires a lot of continuing education on your parts as well, and that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I can't say enough. I've known many of you gentlemen for many, many years. Many of you have been with the Water Department over twenty years, I'm sure. Farren, how long have you been with the Water Department?
Almost thirty.
Almost thirty. Wow. Well, thank you. Anyway, I will read this proclamation, and I will ask Consular Giego to present it to you. Drinking Water Week, May 7th through the 13th, 2017. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource; and whereas, only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water; and whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend; and whereas, each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Drinking Water Week; and further, I encourage all citizens of the City of Alamosa to support and celebrate all corresponding activities given under this day, third day of May, 2017. Counsel?
If you'll join us, please.
I'm missing him.
I'm missing him.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, blessed change.
I know we should give all the water to the blessed.
Did you?
Come on.
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 Thank you.
Thank you for the picture. We'll move on now to the Municipal Clerk's Week Proclamation. I will just read this proclamation, and I will go down and present it to our city clerk. Municipal Clerk's Week, May 7th through 13th, 2017. Whereas, the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks, Holly C. Martinez, Susana Gallegos, and Lechelle Montano, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Further, I encourage all citizens of the City of Alamosa to support the celebration and corresponding activities given under my hand and the seal of the City of Alamosa this third day of May, 2017. We'll sign this. Come down and present this to our city clerks. Consular Daniel?
I was just gonna say, Holly and your team are doing a great job, so thank you for everything that you do. It's an awesome job that you guys do.
Consular Hensley?
I also was gonna add, I appreciate everything that all of you do. I know it just continues to get busier and busier, and I'm just really impressed with how you make it all work and make it work smoothly, so thank you.
Consular Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing, thank you, Holly, for dealing with all of us.
Yeah.
Consular Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Holly, you and your team are awesome. You all do such a wonderful job of keeping us all organized and up to date with all the different meeting and activities throughout the city, and I've heard a lot of great things about you and your team from people throughout the community. You've only been on our city clerk for, like, under two years or something like that, but you've grown so much in such a short time, so keep up the great work.
Consular Stefano?
I want to thank you for the great job you guys are doing, all of you, man. It's a challenging job, and you guys do a wonderful job. The court system, all you guys handle, great job. Thank you.
exercise during its meetings. We'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we only have one-ish one item, so the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 19, 2017. Consular Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. We have parks and recreation, two items for them. Thank you for being here, Heinz.
You're welcome again. Here we go. All right. The city released an invitation for bids to replace all six rodeo bucking chutes at the city fairgrounds. The existing chutes are in disrepair and need replacing, both for their functionality and their safety issues that are involved with them. Every season, you know, every June before, you know, the rodeo starts, the park staff's out there rewelding joints, replacing the wood, making other general repairs to make sure that the chutes are safe for the rodeo folks. And as far as I know, those things are as old as I, since I've been here over thirteen years, so they were there when I got here, so. And they're not of the, as good a quality as what these new chutes are going to be. Staff researched various brands available, and we approved three brands for the vendors to bid on. We did receive three brands. They're listed there. WW Chutes for $22,552.50, Prefred Chutes, that one's also from Texas, $23,274, plus another almost $2,000 for padding, which is included in the $22,000 bid. And then, Monovista Co-op did one for their tardor chutes, and their bid came into over, almost $29,000. We did look to make sure that we applied our local preference policy, and because it's over 28 percent difference between the low bid and their bid, it doesn't fall into that category at all. And also, we talked to WW Manufacturing. They estimate that their delivery date would be about June 1st for those chutes. So, for you is the wish to purchase at the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and that of WW Manufacturing, that is what's before you tonight. There are some different alternatives, a financing part of it, award a bid to WW for the amount of $22,552.50, and using, we got a 2017 SLV COG mini grant in the amount of $10,000 that would be supporting the project, and also, the remainder of that would be from the 2017 capital budget from the Conservation Trust Fund for $12,552.50. Also, you can award it to any other of the firms, or you can come back and say you want to do something different.
Thank you, Heinz. Consular Giego?
You did say these are going to be installed before the rodeo, or?
We're going to make every attempt to do that. Yeah, we've talked to Don Honeycutt, and it's possible that we're going to give it a shot. We would like to have them available. They're kind of got some travel plans going on, so we're gonna try to work with them to be there so we can install them while he's there.
Well, I appreciate what you do out there, because this program has come a long ways. And rodeo is recreational for a lot of kids, and they really enjoy it. And for the longest time, those people maintained those grounds out there for a long, long time, and then finally, we finally started doing, Nathan started getting some stuff with yourself in there, so thank you very much for bringing that whole program into the recreational part of...
You're welcome, you bet. Yeah, beside the Alamosa Roundup, which is probably the heaviest user of those bucking chutes, every once in a while, we'll get a request from ASU Rodeo Club to use the facilities there, and then also, Little Bridges has a lot of events during that time period also during the summer.
Very good. Thank you, Heinz. Who will be installing these? I probably read it here somewhere, but...
Well, for the most part, it'll be the park staff tearing it out. That's very simple, and that, and like I said before, we'll hopefully try to get some of the Honeycuts over there to help us reinstall the new ones to their liking.
What's the, what will be the status of the old ones? Are they just no good anymore, or?
We'll have to take a look and see how they come out. The way it looks right now, they all seem to be welded together, so they're gonna have to be cut up to get, to get them out. So, these are put together individually, so there's quite a bit of difference between the old chutes and the new chutes.
Thank you, Heinz.
Yeah.
Consular Giego?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve the rodeo bucking chutes to WW Manufacturing Company in the amount of $22,552.50.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Say none. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Move on to B. Motion to approve the nine-hole expansion of the disc golf course. Mr. Heinz?
All right, councillors, if you don't mind, I'll have Justin Davis come up with me. He's from the SLV Disc Golf Association, and he did do the presentation to the rec board about the proposed expansion to the disc golf, and we've got a couple of maps that we have attached to the Council Communiqué, and these appear, you know, for councillors to both ask us questions and clarify what we want to do. Just reading from the Communiqué, the plan is to add nine holes, would be to the north of the existing course and designate for beginners, but it would be a little bit more advanced. And we've got a couple of maps that we have attached to Council Communique, and these appear for, you know, for councilors to both ask us questions and clarify what we want to do. Just reading from the communique, the plan is to add nine holes, would be to the north of the existing course and designate for beginners, but it would be a little more advanced. As you can tell, like, the front nine holes has about 2,285 yards, the back nine, 2,425 yards. And the expansion is about 3,000 yards. So each hole, on the average, is longer than the front, the original front and back nines. The Golf Association, they worked with the soil geologists from the Department of Agriculture to determine the layout and to have the least amount of impact on the ecosystem. The larger course could bring in the Professional Golf, Disc Golf Association sanctioned tournaments and create a more efficient flow of players, the way it's built, as proposed. It leaves alone existing trails and sites for bird watchers. Design allows players to be closer to the Rio Grande and see the river from where they are playing on that northern section. And the course would flow in a circle, would allow players to walk back to the parking lot when they're done with that section. Other than the land, the expansion would need nine additional baskets, which come to about $3,000. The Disc Golf Association already has over half that amount in their budget from collecting on tournament fees, and they would be saving more for the expansion. Additionally, they have volunteers that are willing to do brush cleanup and anything else that would be needed to move forward. The rec advisory board had the presentation on April 11th of this year, and unanimously expressed their support of staff and the Disc Golf Association pursuing with City Council the prospect of expanding the current disc golf course by nine holes. Financially wise, in there in your packet, the new signage, we estimate, considering how we did it on the first 18 holes, would be about $1,000. And then about half of the baskets, we would have about $1,500 from the Parks and Rec Department, savings from the Conservation Trust Fund, which we just got on the bucking chutes, so to go towards this.
Heinz, seems like a small investment for a large recreational opportunity out there.
Yes. In fact, you know, as you recall, the first nine holes was an Eagle Scout project, was very popular, and ASU helped us with the back nine holes. They donated the money for those 3,000 for the back nine holes. And just about every day, spring, summer, fall, winter, you'll see somebody out there playing. So it is a very well-used recreational output.
Thank you. Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heinz. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Justin for being here tonight. I don't know if you all know Justin, but he's been a cornerstone of the Disc Golf Association here in Alamosa for the last four years. I've played disc golf with him numerous times. I haven't in the last two years. I apologize, Justin. But I'm really, and three years ago, we were talking about trying to expand this thing even before that. And I'm happy to see that it's environmentally friendly. It's not going to have a huge impact on whatever's out there, bird-wise and that type of stuff. And it won't affect the trail system that's back there, because I know that was a little bit of a concern. And I'm also happy to see that it's next to the river, as much as you can be. And then another thing that I think you all need to know, council, is that the Professional Disc Golf Association of America, they want to go to courses that are longer, and putting in these nine holes might take care of that. And that, and if we were able to get those sanctioned events here in Alamosa, that's butts in hotel beds, that's money for our community. That's a big deal, if we could, if Alamosa could host a tournament like that. So I'm all for this, and $2,500 to help with this, I feel is a no-brainer.
Thank you. Councilor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to recognize Justin. When I first came to Alamosa, I believe the disc golf course had just opened up, and Justin was one who taught me how to play. And ever since then, I use it for my therapy. That's where I go to relax and de-stress, to go and play disc golf. But what I like about it is that it's an entire family event. I see mothers, fathers, I see dogs, I see different families with babies, and I see everyone coming out there with small kids and making it a family affair, which is really good for our community. And it's something that people can do that's not really very expensive at all. And I believe the Parks and Rec Department have discs. If they wanted to go and borrow some there, it will. And people bring their own, and people share. So I think it's a great addition. And the other thing I like is the tournaments that you put on, on the weekends. And that, those tournaments really draw people right now to the town. So those additional nine holes, I think, just like Councilman V. Hill mentioned, are going to be a great addition to the course. Keep up the great work. And the other thing I like is that the people who play disc golf, they really respect the course, and they really try to maintain it. And for the most part, they keep a lot of the debris and trash away from the park. And I would like to encourage people to continue to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I'm fortunate to be on the rec board with the mayor. And Justin, I really appreciated the amount of research you've done. You were telling us how long you've been looking at this and using the Disc Golf Association to help plan, and that they're, they take care of the course and have done a great job. And you really appreciated what's happening with the Parks and Recs. So I, I just want to tell you how much I value, and that we value, the time and energy and work you put into this presentation, and really making sure, as Councilor V. Hill said, that it's not going to be an impact to the environment. You've done an excellent job professionalizing our disc golf, and so thank you so much for that.
Very good. There's not a whole lot more I can add to that, you know, but it's another aspect of extending the recreational opportunities here in Alamosa, and thank you so much for all your hard work. Definitely appreciated. Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no further questions or discussion, I move that we approve the nine-hole expansion to the disc golf course.
And I will second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. Do we need to indicate the money contribution?
I beg your, Councilor.
I believe if you want to include that, that's fine. You can include the contribution from the city to make this happen, estimated at about $2,500.
Did I like to amend my motion?
Absolutely.
And add that?
And I will second the amendment.
Okay, we've got an amended motion and a moaned second. Is there any further discussion? Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to City Manager and Legal, Wildfire Academy support. Ms. Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that our representative to the Marketing Board, Liz, brought to our attention. The Marketing Board is taking a look at how they can really welcome the Wildfire Academy. And we have two representatives here, Jamie and Rob. This, the last time they were here actually predates me, so I have really not very much information I can offer. But from what I've been told, that last time, the coordination of the train ride was a really big hit. It pulled about 200, 250 firefighters here for the training, and having these types of activities helps to ensure that they'll come back in the future. Jamie, if you want to say a few words, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Heather pretty much covered the wildfire part, so that was great. She was right on. But, and I don't mean to hijack my little presentation here, but I did, while I was here, I did want to share with council how exciting our summer is going to be, in addition to the Wildfire Academy. I recently, just earlier this week, sent out a newsletter, and the main article was Tourism is Economic Development. Thought it was a great article that I found. And so I wanted to, again, share how many events that we had coming up in June, so I printed out a little calendar. Whoops. While I was sitting there, I noticed there was a mistake of June 1st, so I was a little bit apprised about that, especially because one of them was a city event. So I apologize. I was trying to get my calendar straight. But what we'd also like to do with that calendar is send it out to our downtown businesses, our restaurants, our recreation attractions, anybody that really needs a heads-up for how busy our summer's going to be, and how that they, they can be a part of that and hopefully benefit from the economic impact of what those events do for us here in Alamosa. So, like Mr. V. Hill said, definitely gets people in hotel rooms when we have good events, so.
Absolutely. And 200, 250 firefighters here, possibly with their families, is quite an impact, Jamie.
Yes, it is. And actually, that's about how many people rode the train last time they were here. And over the course of the whole Wildfire Academy, their attendance is about 400, but they don't all stay for the whole events, depending on what classes they take and stuff. So between that and Ride the Rockies, and bike events, and rodeo, and all of our other great events here, it's going to be quite a busy summer. So, back to the Wildfire Academy. I brought it to my board. Like Heather said, we, last time they were here, we took them on the train ride, they had a barbecue, concert up at the top. I know Mayor Lucero attended that event that time, and we had a really good time. And it was definitely one of the draws to bring them back here. I know that Wendy Fisher, the academy organizer, has tried to get it back in Alamosa several times. That's definitely been a draw, but because of scheduling conflicts at Adam State, it's been a challenge sometimes. But they're excited about being back here this year. We want to do the train for them again, because it was such a good event. And we taught, we have been working with the Rio Grande and scenic railroad, and they estimated the cost for us to host this train event, it's about $10,000. So, some of the marketing district, it was kind of like a no-brainer. Of course, we wanted to do it in some capacity, but we also wanted to extend the invitation to see if any other, anybody else wanted to be a part of it. And so I think one of my board members turned to Liz and said, "Well, how about the city?" And so that's, you know, how we got here tonight. But I also wanted to show what the flyer would look like that goes to all the train attendees, or the wildfire attendees. If you did want to sponsor, I'd want to include the city's logo there on the bottom. Just to show how I would show the city's word as well. And we all know how supportive we are of what the firefighters do for us and protect us and protect our natural, public lands and, and stuff. So it's just kind of a feel-good thing all around. They're so appreciative of getting to go, and wanted to see if council would like to also be a part of it.
So just to jump in a little bit, the information that was presented to us is that the cost of the meal might be a potential area we could sponsor. I don't know if that got snagged up yet. But that is estimated to be about 500 to 1,000. You might remember the rodeo was here previously, and they normally had requested 5,000, and this year, they requested 4,000. So conceivably, I can't tell you if anyone else is going to come for the remainder of the year to request a sponsorship, but if no one else knew were to come, we do have still then $1,000 in that sponsorship line item that could certainly fit this type of need if council so decides.
Thank you, Heather. Councilor, who's next? Councilor V. Hill?
Oh yeah, I'll take it. I'm sorry, but the Wildfire Academy, is that of Colorado, or the country, of the west, of the region?
It's called the Colorado Wild something, I'm sorry. It's a really long title, but it does represent the region. There's public agencies, National Forest, or Fed Forest Service, a lot of people attend for the training to get, you know, there's certain certifications or hours in, stuff like that.
Thank you. And then my next question is for Heather. Just a quick reminder for me, our sponsorship line item is for 10,000?
Yes, sir. And so traditionally, that has been split in the past of 5,000 towards the rodeo and 5,000 towards Beat the Heat.
So Beat the Heat will take five, four, one to the barbecue, excuse me, to the rodeo? So we could have $1,000 to play with? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Hensley.
So I remember, and I honestly don't remember which year it was, but I know it was a few years ago when they were here last time. And, oh my gosh, the impact it had on the city was phenomenal. And as you can see from the calendar, they're here for a full week. Obviously, some do come and go, but from a hotel standpoint, the restaurants, all of the different businesses, it's a huge influx of money, good times. And so I definitely think this is something that I would like to support, being able to do something and hopefully encourage them to come again the next time, as far as their rotation.
Councilor Grealish.
So Jamie, the 10,000 just covers the train ride? It doesn't cover the concert or the barbecue?
It does. The $10,000 is everything, but we just wanted to see if anybody else wanted to pitch in. And we're prepared to support it without a doubt, because it was a great thing, but...
Liz says it is an economic development driver, and it's something that we all should support, you know? But I just wondered if it was like broken out the concert, the barbecue, and then the train, but it's all together?
It's all together. Matt Abbey's been working with us, and without knowing an exact number of attendees and stuff, we don't know an exact meal cost, we just kind of rounded it off.
Because it also helps the train, too.
Yeah, yeah. And it's on a Tuesday night, so that's great, because I usually don't have trains running on Tuesdays, so.
Good job, Jamie.
Councilor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie, thank you for all the work you do in keeping the hotels full throughout the year, and keeping our economic development plans and strategies in place, working with everyone in different organizations throughout the community. My question with the $1,000, if we decide to be a sponsor, will they recognize the city at that dinner and say the dinner is sponsored on behalf of the city of Alamosa by any chance?
Oh, sure, we could do that as well as, they usually make announcements on the train, so we can make sure we get a plug in there as well.
A plug would help. I just wanted to throw that in.
Oh, and, I almost forgot, the important part. Of course, all of our city council and staff would be invited to go along as well to show your appreciation to the firefighters.
Well, thank you very much, and keep up the great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Grealish.
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve the, is it $1,000 from, what's the money, is there, Heather?
The sponsorship line item.
Sponsorship line item.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the endorsement letter recommending Councilor Hensley to serve on the CML Executive Board. Ms. Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is going to be a tough one for council. As you might remember, Liz was appointed to fulfill a vacancy that was created on the CM Board, CML Board. She has completed that. I, from what I hear, everyone has been very impressed with the representation that she's provided, the communication between the Colorado Municipal League and the Valley. I know she's reached out to some of our Valley partners to make sure it's not just an Alamosa representation, and I think that's been appreciated as well. That term that she was finishing out is actually ending, and so part of the process that the Colorado Municipal League has is, we need to do another letter of support. Councilor Hensley has indicated she is interested in maintaining that position and doing everything else that needs to happen to be re-elected to that position.
Very good. Councilor Hensley, would you like to say anything?
I've really enjoyed it. It's been a learning process. I always like to learn new things. And so initially, when I first started, I remember my first meeting, sort of like my first meeting on City Council, and you kind of go in wide-eyed, and you're, all of it, you're absorbing everything. And I feel like at this point now, I definitely have things that I can add, but I continue to learn. One of the, I guess, highlights was when I was able to present at one of the lunches that we did at the meeting, and I was able to share about our experience with our park. And I did a slideshow and presented on that. So it was great to be able to show off our community. And I think it's a great way, because we are a small area, and to share that with some of the larger cities, and they really, really appreciate it. So that was probably one of my highlights.
Thank you. You know, it's wonderful to read about your community in the CML Journal that they send out on a monthly basis. As a matter of fact, I was pleasantly surprised to go through the whole article, and it was written by one of our own, which is really great. And you know, I think you are probably, if I'm not mistaken, maybe the second or third person from the Valley that's on the executive board. I know that Eric Grossman was on there from pre, for a while, but it's, Valley representation is extremely important for us. And having presenters like you and Councilor Coleman at CML, of course, puts us on the map, which is, which is an asset, definite asset for all of us. And so I appreciate that, and thank you for stepping up and volunteering to do that. Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Liz, you're awesome. So I'm going to move that we authorize the mayor to sign the endorsement letter recommending Councilor Hensley to serve on the CML Exec Board.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just had a comment real quick.
Oh, okay.
I was going to make a comment briefly, but we couldn't ask for a better person to represent the city of Alamosa, who's so professional in every way, and also who has the interest of the entire San Luis Valley at heart. So thank you, Liz.
There isn't any further discussion? Start voting, please. Oh, Liz?
I was just going to thank everybody for their support.
Absolutely. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to a first reading on Ordinance Number 11-2017, and ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement amongst various San Luis Valley local government entities for continuation of a regional planning commission for transportation planning. Ms. Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is representative of any time you see some new leadership in an organization, they kind of take a look at things, do some housekeeping, and make sure everything's up to date. This by no means is anything that is new. It's an agreement. We've been participating in the Regional Transportation Planning Commission for the 20 years that it's been in existence. There's no monetary value to this. It's just to clean it up and make it current for our times, and staff recommends that we approve the IGA.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, is this, is the goal of this IGA and this group to come up with ideas to get transportation around the valley between all the towns and cities in it?
I think that's part of it. I think the primary focus is for CDOT, they need to have an organized way to be able to collect local information. So this creates a regional collection of that to where we can put things in. The more we can come together on the same page on those regional priorities, then that can carry a... same page on those regional priorities, then that can carry additional weight when CDOT's taking a look at different projects. But it's also clearly an area where we can discuss different things that are going on in the valley that may not rise to the level of CDOT, but it can be of joint interest as well.
Thank you, Heather.
Do we have any other questions of our city manager? Counselor Daniel?
If there are no other comments, Mayor, I move that we approve upon first reading ordinance number 11-2017, approving an intergovernmental agreement among the various San Luis Valley local government entities.
Counsel Stefano, I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
And so I would like to amend my motion, please. So we approve ordinance, thank you, Counselor Gregel, 11-2017, for the intergovernmental agreement, and set it for a public hearing on May 17 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as we can.
My second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Is there any further discussion? Stand on, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
We'll now move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, last week, I attended the Rio Grande Farm Park meeting last Monday. They got a lot going on. Boy, they're going to start planting mid-May with all the local farmers and in their plots and that. They are discussing ways on how to water their crops this year. They think that it's probably too late to put in a sprinkler system. It's also very costly, so they're probably going to flood irrigate again this
Levy.
The levy, right in there. And people are driving on that sometimes, and they're year. They're having a little bit of issues with security. Some people are kind of messing trying to figure out a way to stop it. So.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
with their equipment, and they're thinking about ways to tighten that up, maybe building You bet.
Anyone else have a, Counselor Hensley?
So a couple of things that happened last week. So we had our golf board meeting.
a fence or a wall or something. They also have a lot of events coming up for Mother's
Nothing too major, obviously getting ready for golf season, and it's definitely getting
Day weekend. They're having a walk along the Rio, along the, what do you call it, the
underway. And so they did have some changes in their structure of pricing, but so far it's looking like it's turning out to be okay. And so anyway, so that's really looking
trails out there. And then on Mother's Day, they're all morning long, there's events
good. Obviously, we're preparing, I think it'll be next meeting, the next meeting or
for kids, for mothers. There's going to be music. There's going to be reading of books
the next couple of meetings, I forget, I don't have it in front of me, that they will actually present to city council. And then on a side note, I'm on that, on the branding
for moms, by children and that. So they're just trying to get people out there. They're very excited that the farmer's market will be selling their, will be having one night
committee for San Luis Valley, and so they did pick a logo that will be used for branding
a week to sell their stuff out there on Wednesday, starting in August or September,
the San Luis Valley, and it was really exciting to be part of that process. And so that first
I believe. So they got a lot going on. Thank you.
I had a question from Counselor Vehill. I noticed that they disked all that alfalfa.
phase is done, and now we're getting ready for the next phase.
I had a question for you, Counselor Hensley. With that branding stuff, they picked
Is that going to be planted? Something, another crop is going to be planted there?
I don't know the specifics on what, on who, what farmers farm what and who is a logo. Did they pick a slogan?
So at this point, no. We used a tagline on there just so you could get a feel for
there, but I would assume so.
Yeah, I've been by there, and they've disced pretty much the whole area. It looks
it. I think we're getting closer, but we're not exactly there yet. So hopefully real
really good.
Yeah. So the one issue they're having is right just south of that alfalfa, there's
soon.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gregel?
I also had a question for Liz. The restaurant part, how's that coming along?
Well, I'll tell you from the golf board perspective, they're loving not having the restaurant anymore. When we talk about financials, oh, my gosh, substantially different. So that's a real plus. But talking to them, I think like any restaurant, when you're starting off, some learning curves and things like that. But overall, the response has been really strong, and they've been adjusting. So recommendations from the golfers of some things they would like, and I know they've been adjusting to that. And I do notice their sales and the amount of people that are going in there has increased month after month. So again, I won't say that they're sliding right yet, but at the same time, progress, and definitely it's on the positive side.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Very good. I'd also like to say that I applaud our city manager and you, Liz, for being on that committee. That took a lot of time and energy, and I appreciate the result. And of course, yeah, we do have a lot of work to do, to be completed, but thank you both for being there on behalf of the City of Alamosa. It means a lot. Anyway, the Housing Authority met some time back, and they are undergoing replacing all the windows and doors at the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority will also be under federal mandate to be totally non-smoking by 2018. They're beginning the process now. And so by 2018, that would be a totally smoke-free campus. They may have areas where people can smoke. That has yet to be determined. They will be installing sprinkler systems in different designated areas, and they've also purchased some lawn mowers and other equipment to do some of the heavy work out there. But that's what's going there at almost full capacity. I think there are about three or four units that are not being utilized at this point in time. That goes for the Housing Authority. Any other committee reports? Now we'll move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to remind council of some events that are coming up before your next meeting. And the first one is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM is the public meeting that council wanted to hold in order to collect some additional information before you have your first vote. So that is something where we anticipate as many councils possible to be able to attend. Staff will be here if you need us to help do the time clock or if council has questions for us or those types of things. Depending on how many people come, I think will probably dictate how you want to control the meeting. I think if you walk in and there's five people, you may not feel like you need to do time limits if you walk in and it's standing room only. You may want to make sure that we look at some time limits, maybe do a show of hands after each speaker on who agrees with that so we can limit redundancy, those types of things. So we're here to help in any way we can. We will have Pat and Harry here, so at the end if council has questions, we can hopefully give you those answers. We would plan on taking an ordinance, however revised following that meeting, at your next meeting for first reading. So that is the plan for that public meeting. It's not a legal, what?
I don't think you said the topic.
Oh, thank you. I didn't say the topic. It's, the topic is for the marijuana home grow regulations. So thankfully, I've got the city attorney here keeping me on the straight and narrow. And I'm sure that the bigger topic of marijuana might come up because it's hard to sometimes distinguish, but really the focus is the ordinance that's proposed before council. So we have tried to get that on the website and promote that so we can make sure people at least know what they need to be speaking either in support of or against, or if they have questions, those types of things. So that's what we've been trying to advertise for May 10 at 6:00 PM. We also then, next week on Friday, someone set a 6:00 AM meeting with the Alamosa Board of Education. I think that does not say our dedication to partnerships. I don't know what else does. So I know the city clerk is working on a location for that, and it'll be a good time catching up with the Board of Education at 6:00 AM. May 16 is the CML Spring Outreach. This year, it's being held in Del Norte. And so if you are going and want to look at carpooling, let the city clerk know, and we can kind of see if there's stuff we can do there. And then I just wanted to remind you that your meeting on the 17th is going to be a longer meeting. The city clerk will be ordering dinner for you because you are starting at 5:00 with an executive session for the municipal judge, and then you will go straight into a 6:00 with a work session, a joint work session with the golf board, that will then probably go right up to your 7:00 regular meeting. So just a reminder to council that that will be a meatier night for you, and the city clerk will be taking care of you for dinner on that night so we can make sure that your mental capacity is functioning. The, just two general updates. One is on the Inspire Grant. As council knows, some of the communities in the Valley were successful through the first round. The Alamosa County was not, but we were invited to participate with a submission, and so that is coming up. Our previous submission included $100,000 commitment for the trail and to be able to secure those types of things. And it also included a commitment that after three years, we would assume the FTE that was handling the coordination of outdoor activities. It's essentially the same with just some minor tweaking based on the information we've received on GOCO on what will make us more competitive. In regards to the FTE, we are continuing to have some discussions with the Boys and Girls Club because they also have talked about an FTE maybe for some of the similar programming. And so we want to make sure that it's sustainable and that we're meeting both needs. And so if there's ways we can partner and help with that, we want to make sure that we address that now and don't miss this opportunity. But there's still going to be at least one FTE, if not two, and we're working in partnership on that. In regards to the trail, they were a little hesitant on just the general trail easement, securing those things because there are so many different property owners. They wanted something that was maybe going to be more shovel-ready. And so what we've done instead is we will be putting forward the two underpasses that we need for the trail. So one for the bridge as you come into town here, and then one for Understate Street. And so from a safety perspective, we think those are still very important, and we, long-term, will look at the connection for the trails, making sure we have the right easements. But once we have them, we need to have those underpasses, too, for a safety perspective. So it's still very much trail-related. It still very much fits into the vision, long-term, of what we need. It's just we had to tweak it to make it competitive for GOCO and to ensure that this project will hopefully get funded. So that's an update on the Inspire Grant. The other update I have is you, council has, since I've been here and some before, received monthly financial reports for the preceding month at your second meeting. We have added additional review of those reports and additional reconciliation, just because those are some things that needed to happen. So we're not going to have it at the second meeting in the month. It will be the first meeting of the next month. So that allows staff the full month to close out the expenses, to do the reconciliation, and then the contract we have with Lisa as that outside entity to review it. It allows her time to review it. If there's any questions, we can get those addressed before it comes to council. So it's going to be a much more reviewed, complete information that's coming to council. So I wanted to make sure you weren't caught by surprise when that's not going to be on your next agenda. So you'll still get it, but we just need those extra two weeks to allow for a more professional review of the reports.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Gregel?
I had a question. Can you give us an update on the All Purpose Pavilion? Where's that at?
The bidding process closes this Friday. I will tell you, we are nervous. We have two bonded local general contractors, and they've got a lot of projects already on their plate. So we're nervous. The state as a whole, along the Front Range, has projects that they just, they can't find people for. So for us, we've done everything we can to put that information out there, and at this point, it's going to be what it is. So Friday is when that closes.
Thank you, Heather. Any other staff announcements? We'll move on to our liquor, local liquor licensing authority action. Tonight, we've got a decision on a new application for a beer and wine license for JK LLP doing business as the Wet Paintbrush. And that is our city attorney.
It is. I have pride of authorship in the two proposed findings for your consideration. I have more pride of authorship in one of them than I do in the other, and that will be an issue that we will take up sometime in the future about how we do this kind of thing when it seems at the hearing that there's really pretty much one decision to be made. But there are always reasons that I might have overlooked, and so you have a proposed written findings for granting the application for the beer and wine license and a proposed written findings for denying that application. You need to have a motion to accept one or the other of them with or without any changes to the draft as presented to you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council, we have any discussion? Or Counselor Vehill?
If there's no discussion, I move that we adopt the proposed findings granting the license with or without modification.
Counselor Stefano?
My second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the liquor license for the Wet Paintbrush?
Yeah, just real quick, I want to reiterate what our counselor said. We could have taken care of this last meeting, and we should probably look at those.
And we'll be bringing that to you at an upcoming meeting, a proposed way to amend how you deal with those things.
Thank you. Counselor Gregel?
Want to comment on Mr. Vehill's comment? It's true, you know, being a liquor license holder, and when you go into a program like that, you want to start your business as soon as possible. And to delay them that much time only holds them back. So I think we do need to look at something where, and I know we've had these rules where we go back and do the pros and cons and all this, but in a case like that, you know, it's just something that, the faster the better.
Especially if the, if the person or the group has all their ducks in row.
Sure. No. Thank you, Mr. Vehill.
Eric, is there a state statute, or do we have something in our charter recommending that type of action, or can that action be changed at council's discretion?
The only requirement is that you do have to issue written findings. So, and obviously, you can't prepare written findings the night of the hearing, but you could certainly, and this is what I think we'll propose to you, you could certainly, in clear-cut cases, make a decision and then direct me to present to you written findings consistent with that decision for the following meeting. But then at least, and I think you can make the decision effective of the meeting date in which you make it and direct me to...
We're not putting the cart before the horse, are we?
Well, that's why I haven't presented to you yet. I've got to think about it some. But I will think of it.
I guess what I'm saying or looking at is there's got to be a specific time period where we can kind of analyze or at least look at the information that was presented in a legible form, which you provide.
That's right. And the question is, can you make an effective decision before you do that? And that's what I'm going to think about and present to you something for streamlining.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Vehill? Okay. Counsel? Okay, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to council comment. Who has a council comment? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two. The first is, I'm really excited, Liz, that you want to continue on CML, so thank you for doing that for us. We appreciate it a lot. The second is, in the last two to three weeks, and I apologize for not being at the last meeting, I've been getting a lot of concerns about the roundabout, about people not understanding how the yield works, that the signs that, and I didn't get a chance to go look at it today, the pedestrian sign is kind of in front of the yield sign, and people don't understand that yield actually means yield to the people in the circle, not the ones going kind of straight, have the right of way. Many people have expressed concerns about getting hit there. I don't know that there have been any accidents, but they've said that they've had close calls. That's the only report I have, is that they're a little frightened. And so I just don't know if there's a way to increase... something, but I will think of it.
I guess what I'm saying or looking at is there's got to be a specific time period where we can kind of analyze or at least look at the information that was presented in a legible form, which you provide.
That's right. And the question is, can you make an effective decision before you do that? And that's what I'm going to think about and present to you something for streamlining.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Vehill. Okay. Counsel? Okay, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to council comment. Who has a council comment? Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two. The first is, I'm really excited, Liz, that you want to continue on CML, so thank you for doing that for us. We appreciate it a lot. The second is, in the last two to three weeks, and I apologize for not being at the last meeting, I've been getting a lot of concerns about the roundabout, about people not understanding how the yield works, that the signs that, and I didn't get a chance to go look at it today, the pedestrian sign is kind of in front of the yield sign, and people don't understand that yield actually means yield to the people in the circle, not the ones going kind of straight, have the right of way. Many people have expressed concerns about getting hit there. I don't know that there have been any accidents, but they've said that they've had close calls. That's the only report I have, is that they're a little frightened. And so I just don't know if there's a way to increase the signage or do some more education about how a circle, a roundabout, my bad, a roundabout works, and how yielding actually works. I think it's something that our community doesn't have a lot of experience with. I heard from a community member today that got into a not physical altercation, but a yelling fight with the car next to them after not having a great experience in the roundabout. And so I think that if we could just check that out and see if there's any way we can help with that, I've been getting more and more concerns about the use of it. People think that the roundabout is actually not a terrible idea, although I still fight with those, but that just the understanding of how to use it is where the challenge is now.
So, so thank you. I think we, when we were looking at doing this, we had some educational materials, so maybe we dig those out, take another look. And then, I'm not sure if it was you or maybe another council member had an idea for a certain type of sign, and I think we need to follow up on that as well from a clarification perspective. So I made some notes, and we'll look into that and see what we can do for education.
Counselor Hensley.
So two things. So first of all, I want to congratulate Counselor Jan Vehill's mother-in-law. We went to the Educator Hall of Fame, Adam State's Educator Hall of Fame, two nights ago, last night?
Last night.
Last night. Seems so long ago. But anyway, really great event. Obviously, it honored a lot of educators that graduated from Adam State who, oh my gosh, the stories were incredible. But Counselor Vehill's mother-in-law was one of them, and it was great to see that. So congratulations. The other one is, before our next meeting, we will actually, I know Trinidad will have their graduation, but Adam State as well. And so just want to send out a congratulations to all the graduates, having, going on to their next step of life and becoming that working force and adults. And it's always, as somebody who teaches at Adam State, it's a really proud moment, and so I'm really looking forward to another graduation.
Thank you. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing is, along with education, this is also Teacher Appreciation Week. So for all the teachers that we've had, that we've dealt with, that we've experienced, thank you. And then just another, I want to ask Heather and maybe Pat if there's any movement on the railroad crossing down there that we talked about and that grant, if there's anything going on with that. And if you do, that'd be great. If not, let me know. Thanks.
Good. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the need for an executive session this evening. I will entertain a motion. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes 246-402-4F for Personnel Matters for the Evaluation of the City Clerk.
My second.
I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Why don't we take about five minutes? Then we'll move into executive session. Then after the executive session, we'll move back into regular session, and no further business will be discussed.